She's here to give you the financial presentation from fiscal year twenty, I think it's through twenty-three, twenty-four, which ended June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. They just finished. They've been a very important partner with us now for quite a few years. I don't remember exactly how many, but anytime I have any questions at all, they take my calls or make emails and answer back so that we do things right up front. We don't have a lot of stuff on the back end that we have to do. We appreciate their help a lot.
Thank you, Sandy. Um, thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me here tonight to present the audit report for the town of Tyrone for fiscal year ended two thousand and twenty-four. I want to say thank you also to Brandon, Sandy, and their teams for, as she said, their preparation during the year, their preparation at year end and after, their attentiveness during the audit. Uh, one thing I always note when I'm working out here is it's, it's never about the easy way to do it or somebody wanting to do it their way. They're always wanting to do it the best way, and I appreciate that. And congratulations to Bridget on her five years. It's been nice to see her grow in her position and with the city under Sandy's leadership over the last five years. And a thank you to all the city employees. We worked with obviously Sandy's team the most, but we worked with Phyllis. We talked with Brandon. Um, I even talked to Commissioner Campbell this year, and we worked a lot with Scott going over the projects and just everybody that we talked to or need something from is very responsive, very attentive. Dee often, you know, rounding up paperwork for us. So I just want to make sure, I would never be able to name everybody, but um, we, we get the same great attitude and attentiveness from everybody that we need something from. So that's much, much appreciated. It ma- makes our job easier. And as Sandy said, I want to relay that to you guys as well. We're available all year. Um, I know I'm here tonight and I'll go through this fairly quickly. If there are questions either following the presentation or anytime during the year, please don't hesitate to reach out because we, we want that kind of relationship where we're talking to our clients all year, not just when we're on site. And Sandy's right, it makes a big difference. You know, we're in the know with what's going on. Things are handled properly on, on the front end. So it's not, you know, just sticking things aside until we get here. They definitely reach out and, and we like that. We encourage all of our clients to do that throughout the year. Just to go over just real quickly what you have. We've got a bound audit report that's also on the screen. This is where we're going to spend most of our time because it's the most condensed version of the, the financial reporting for the city. As you'll see, the annual financial report itself is the larger bound report. And it's, I think, right around eighty pages, so definitely not going to read that to you tonight. But if you look through this, have questions, I'm glad to answer those. And you have one letter that we issued, and you've got a copy of that as well. This is required communications that we have to make to governance relative to the, the audit that we have performed. So I will start with the audit presentation and we'll, we'll start on the next slide, slide two. And this is where we actually look at the opinion. Um, I will go ahead and point out, we actually have two reports within this annual financial report, and this is the first of those two, and that's on pages one through four. And this is actually the auditor's opinion on the financial statements. So um, this is our opinion on the financial statements that are included here behind that report, and it is an unmodified opinion. You've probably heard that maybe also called a clean opinion. That means that, that we believe in our opinion based on our procedures and our audit that the financial statements presented here do present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the town at June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four and the respective changes in financial position and cash flows. So, you know, what that means to you is that you've, you've got our opinion enabling you to place reliability on the financial statements here that are, you know, the responsibility of management. And, and that's another point that I wanted to, to bring up in this auditor's report. Uh, the financial statements themselves are the responsibility of management. They're maintaining the records, approving transactions, authorizing the transactions, and providing this information to us to come in and audit those balances, look at those transactions, do some testing. And um, you know, our responsibility is to express an opinion on whether or not these financial statements are fair based on our audit. Because you're a government, we audit your financial statements both in accordance with the auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and also the government auditing standards, which are issued by the Controller General of the United States. And that particular standard, the government auditing standards, is what requires that second report that I mentioned, and we'll touch base on that a little later in the presentation. So I want to spend just a few moments talking about what, what we call the government-wide financial statements. The only time that, that you see these financial statements are annually in our report because as you know, um, the city maintains its accounting during the year at the fund level. So you're used to seeing SPOSS fund activity, general fund activity. And here we've got government-wide. So this provides you with information on the town as a whole. So it's basically all of the town's activity combined. So your general fund, your SPOSS fund, your confiscated assets fund, all of that is combined in these statements. It is on a full accrual basis of accounting. There's going to be a little bit of difference in the, a lot of difference if you look at the dollar amounts, but there's a list of the differences as you compare to fund level on the reconciliations. But the first is a statement of net position. So that statement lists the assets of the city, the liabilities of the city, and that's on pages five and six of that sound report. And assets less the liabilities comes to a net position total. And that's what the slide we're looking at here is showing to us. And one thing I want to point out that it's a very positive trend to see is that that net position has continued to rise steadily. See that incline of the chart going this way? Over the last five years, um, the town has increased its net position each year. And ended the fiscal year twenty-four with a total of thirty-six million in net position. Now you do have different types of net position. So the blue on the chart is what Gatsby calls your net investment in capital assets. So that's all of the capital assets that the town owns. Vehicles, equipment, buildings, land, infrastructure, less than depreciation taken, less any debt related to that. So, so for example, this, this new building was financed with bonds. So that building is in the blue number at the cost of the building, less accumulated depreciation to date and less the balance of those bonds, for example. So that nets down to the number that the town has invested in capital. And, and you'll see here, which I'm sure Scott would agree, the town has continually invested in its capital assets because that blue also continues to incline. And one thing, you know, that I noticed the past few years with the audit is that the town has a lot of capital projects going on, and that's reflected here showing that continual increase in that investment. Uh, the red is your restricted funds. Um, that's primarily going to be your SPOSS dollars. Your confiscated asset dollars are in there as well. And you see that go up in two thousand and twenty-four. Keep in mind that you've got a new SPOSS referendum. And so now you've got two SPOSS referendums, one that's very new. And although you may be spending some money out of it, you're probably still spending down some of the prior SPOSS. So it, it makes sense based on the timing of that referendum to see that red get larger in that graph.
Do you mean where do ARCA funds appear on this graph?
ARCA funds would appear in the green and they would appear in last, this is net position, but they would have increased the green last year. So if they're for the amounts that are not expended yet, they're still in the green this year.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. You're welcome. Um, that green is your unrestricted. So when ARCA come in, it was restricted. But as the city identified expenditures that it was going to spend that on, um, that money was able to be transferred to the general fund to cover those expenditures, and then it's no longer restricted. It is assigned to some extent. The town has assigned some of that for capital projects. But we only have a signed fund balance in the governmental funds, not in the net position. So even though you've assigned those amounts for capital projects, they're still going to be unrestricted for net position. So that ARCA came into the green last year and it increased it, and the amount that still has not been expended is, is still sitting in that green at FY twenty-four. And you'll really see that on the next slide, um, slide five. This is the change in that position. So this is the increase in your net position each year. And you will see it has increased every year. You haven't had a decrease in that position. But you will see in two thousand and twenty-three, you've got that large spike in that chart. That's those ARCA transfers coming into that green unrestricted in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Um, that, that's not the entire amount. There would have also been other excess of revenues over expenditures, but the ARCA definitely contributed to that, and that's one reason that year spikes. If you look at twenty-two and twenty-four, you'll see outside of ARCA, it, it's back comparable. And those numbers come from page seven. That's the statement of activities. So that's where the town's revenues and expenditures are listed. So the town's revenues less expenditures come to that change in net position, which was two point two million for FY twenty-four. One more thing to point out about these is although it does reflect the town as a whole, I just wanted to point out, um, the DDA being a component unit is a separate row and column from the city. And also the business type activities, which is your sewer fund, is separate from all the other funds. So the governmental type activities are where your general fund, your SPOSS, your confiscated assets, those type funds are combined. Speaking of the general fund, um, let's take just a quick look at it. Starting on page fifty-five of the bound report is where you'll see the, the full comparative financial statements, and they are comparative. And then also, um, within that, there is a budget comparison as well to the final budget of the town. So revenues were up this year about ten percent. Expenditures were up about twenty percent. And you'll see your unassigned fund balance. The town ended FY twenty-four with twelve point one months of annual expenditures. So that would mean that you have unassigned fund balance, meaning it's not restricted towards any purpose, and it's also not assigned for any government projects for about one year's worth of annual expenditures. So very, it's a very healthy position to be in. And I wanted to point out also that when you see this expenditure increase, some of that is going to be from growth, um, maybe from inflation. But the town also has a lot of capital expenditures going on, and some of those are coming from the general fund. So those are expensed in the general fund. So I just wanted to, you know, make sure you were aware that that increase does include capital outlays made from the general fund. So they're not all necessarily expenditures that are going to be repeated. Okay, on page seven, we've got a graph of the general fund revenue and expenses and other financing sources over the last five years. Um, here you'll see in two thousand and twenty-three, you see that same spike in revenues, which is the dark blue line that we saw on the previous graph. And again, once the expenditures were identified in the general fund for ARCA, that ARCA money was able to be transferred to the general fund. So that's why you see that increase in two thousand and twenty-three. And then you see, you know, that number drop in two thousand and twenty-four. But notice it is still above what the town was at two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two. So even without the ARCA, revenues were still up over the, um, two years prior to the ARCA. And the expenditures were, uh, but I did make some notes here about some of the, I call it one-time expenditures. And what I mean, even though the town may and probably will have capital outlay in fiscal year twenty-five, it's not the same capital outlay. It would be a different vehicle or a, a different public works expenditure. Um, the general government function had about three hundred and seventy-three thousand in capital outlays. Public Works about six hundred and seventy-six thousand in capital outlays. And then also the town did give the DDA one hundred thousand. So if you're looking at that expense increase from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four, um, just looking at those couple of categories of capital outlays and the DDA money would, would have you, you know, over a million dollars right there. And it doesn't mean when I say one time, you're not going to have capital outlay. I just mean those expenditures are not like your operations that are going to keep going. You would be spending capital outlay, but on different capital outlay. And as far as the general fund goes, there are some, obviously, the general fund is a major fund, so there are statements in the front. This is definitely the most information, starting here on page fifty-five. So comparative balance sheet, comparative revenues and expenditures. And then also starting on page fifty-seven, it's not only comparative, but also has the town's final budget. And it's broken down by department and also further broken down by classification, whether the expense was for personal services, capital outlay. Like if you look on page fifty-eight, you'll see that three hundred and seventy-three thousand capital outlay that I mentioned. So this is a really good place for you to compare prior year and know, um, how the numbers in this graph changed over the prior year. On the next slide, I've got a slide just reflecting the fund balance of the general fund over the, the last five years. And the, the darker blue line is your total fund balance. So that would include everything in the general fund. Some may be restricted, some may be assigned. And the yellow line is the unassigned. That means it's not restricted or assigned for any specific purpose. And one thing I wanted to point out, you see the increase in the blue over twenty-three and twenty-four, but you'll notice the unassigned kind of stays comparable or flat. And I just wanted to mention that the town has assigned some fund balance in, for twenty-three and twenty-four. So that's why you see one go up, but the yellow kind of stay flat. So when the ARCA funds came in and increased that fund balance, you see from twenty-two to twenty-three that spike again, but you don't see the spike in the yellow because the, the town basically set that aside for capital projects and different projects. Next on slide nine, we've got a pie chart here of revenues and other financing sources. And what I like about this pie chart is there's lots of pieces of the pie. So if you look at all the slices, the different colors, that is the various sources of revenues that the town has. And you'll see that the two larger sources are local auction sales tax and property sales tax. And what I thought was interesting is they're both exactly thirty-one percent. So, you know, you're not just relying on property taxes to operate the city. Um, you've got a good bit coming in from sales tax, enough to equal the percentage of the, the total. And then you've got, you know, at least another approximate third of the pie coming from various sources combined. Page ten, we've got a similar chart for expenditures. Um, and as we typically see with a, a town or a city, um, public safety and, and public works and general government are usually the larger slices of the pie. Um, public safety is at twenty-six percent, so right around a quarter of it, and public works at thirty-one percent. And again, keep in mind, this does include any capital outlays. So obviously those slices are going to be a little bit larger because both of those departments had some capital outlays in FY twenty-four. Moving on to the next slide, eleven, we've got the sewer fund. And the statements for these sewer funds are on page sixty-nine. You will see that the trend in the sewer fund so far has been that the expenses have exceeded the revenues. Um, I know just from working on the audit, there's been a, a rate increase. And just in looking at twenty-three to twenty-four, um, I did note here that operating revenue did increase eight and a half percent and expenses increased five point nine percent. So you're starting to see that revenue go up more than the expenses are going up. And then the green line down there is the, the net income from operations, which again, it has been a loss. That would be something management continues to look at as they budget and as, um, they consider the increases. And like I said, I know there is a, a recent increase, and I believe that FY twenty-five will be the first full year of that increase. And I'm not trying to put, put Sandy on the spot, but, um, but that would be what you would want to look at if your, if your expenses are fixed. You would want to look at if, if your rates are where they need to be for the fund to, um, you know, not have the deficit going forward. But I, I do know there's been a rate increase. I cannot remember right off the, the effective date. It, it could have been effective all of two thousand and twenty-four. That may be why we see that eight and a half percent increase. Okay.
Haven't we just followed the county on that? Is it working? If their rate goes up or if their cost goes up, we just follow it?
No, it was, yeah, it was a five-year thing. We did, we based it on Fulton County because they're charging us more.
Right.
So we based it on what they were charging us extra. Right?
Yeah, you guys approved, I don't remember when, it was sometime last year, a year before, an incremental increase over five years. We're two years into it or something like that. So there's a couple more years of that. And then more analysis obviously is, is required. We may have to readjust further to, to make up for some of these losses.
Yeah, and I do think, like I said, I think for FY twenty-four, I think that was the first full year of that first incremental increase. But yes, that we'll continue to see the revenues, um, come up. And like I said, it, it is, at least for FY twenty-four, the revenues did exceed the increase in expenses. Um, but as Brandon said, um, you know, that's scheduled right now and it could still need to look at further depending on what that does for the fund.
Did you want to say something?
I, I was just going to make a point about the sewer expansion. You know, we, we did a lot of capital expenditure on the sewer expansion, but we didn't necessarily require tie-ons as a part of that system. So we, as a ratio of our expanded system, we may not necessarily have as many people tied on to that expanded. we may not necessarily have as many people tied on to that expanded system and that pump station. So that just may also be a component of it as we expanded the system. And then we haven't seen quite as many tie-ons. So we just have a little higher ratio of infrastructure to users in this area.
That's a good point. There definitely is some capacity now that's not used yet from that recent. That was a pretty large expansion. That was a good point.
Oh, we have a couple of developments coming too.
So the more new developments that we have coming that tie into sewer, obviously, the more revenue we get, we certainly close that gap. Are we thinking about, since we have sewer capacity requiring the tap for any existing businesses that may want to renovate? Because I know sometimes, like if you have a renovation, there's a requirement to meet certain thresholds.
I'll let Scott jump in here. When we did the initial expansion, we did not put in a requirement for taps. However, if we do increase tap fees, we have had an internal discussion, and this might be something we talked to you about at the council workshop. If we decide to increase tap fees, we may offer to existing properties adjacent to the system that they have a certain amount of time to purchase that connection, not necessarily do the install, but purchase that connection at current rates before we increase the tap fee. And that is an option going forward. But at the time we did expansion, council noted not to require taps onto the system.
Right, it's a way of incentivizing them to join it, but what it's adolescent rate. Okay.
And that expansion, they know better than me because they're, the three of them are more involved in that day-to-day of an expansion. And being forward-thinking about capacity is very important with utilities. So that's one thing to keep in mind, too. I'm sure that's why the decisions, you know, that were made were made. Just know when those developments were coming and be ready to accommodate those. Next on slide 12, I just wanted to talk briefly about the city's other two major funds. Major funds are the larger funds of the city, of the town, excuse me. And they're determined by Gatsby based on percentages of the total funds. So the general fund is always a major fund. And the town also reported its two SPOSS funds as major. So we got the 2017 SPOSS and the 2023 SPOSS. And here, as I mentioned earlier about the restricted go-up, you'll see in that 2023 SPOSS, 2.4 million came in in SPOSS revenues, but only sort of 300,000 was expended. So because you're holding some SPOSS money, because you're still spending down the 17, is what would cause that 2024 restricted amount to increase. Because as you see, the 2017, of course, because that referendum ended, brought in less revenues and expended more, which is what you would expect from capital projects fund. Page 13, the report here that this slide describes starts on page 76. And that is that second report that I mentioned that is required under government auditing standards. And this is a report that explains our consideration of your internal control, your compliance. And we don't give an opinion on that, but we do report on that, explain what we've noted. And I will say, there are a couple of comments here. There are no new comments. And if you recall from years prior, both of these are related to limited staff. And in fiscal year 24, that latter half of fiscal year 24, the finance department did fill that additional position that was approved. So that will definitely help in these areas. So I just wanted to point that out. But we did not have any new findings as far as deficiencies in internal control.
So let me see if I'm hearing right. We were deemed for not having kind of staff. We hired more staff, but we're still being deemed?
Yes, and let me explain how that works. So the separation of duties requires separation between authorization, custody, record-keeping, and reconciliation. So with almost any function relative to funds, whether it's receipting or dispersing, you would need about four people to split those. And your third finance person probably started in April or May of FY '24. So there's definitely some training for her to be able to take on some roles. But even when she does, there may be some areas where you still have a lack of segregation of duty. Payroll is one that comes to mind. Municipal court is another one. You know, you don't have four people over there, you've got two. So it, to me, there is still some risk, but that risk is going to be minimized. So I can't say just because you filled that position that the comment's going to go away. Because if there's a risk there, we're required to make you aware of it. Now, it could be that that risk is lessened, meaning you're able to cover some of those functions. So the comment could change. Instead of being a generic comment, it could become a comment where the risk is in the area of payroll and journal entries, for instance. So we may be able to do that. And we do look at that every year. We do look at that every year. So as the new finance person is trained and taking on some of those roles, you know, when we're back here and in July, we'll look at that again. And we'll look at where we didn't have separation and see if we do now. But having three people now doesn't necessarily mean that you'll have that optimum segregation of duties in every area. But we will look at every area. And this is a common, this is a, this is a common risk of governments. I have large county governments that have this deficiency because they're going to have some departments that they just can't carry for people in every department that receives money. So, but the town does have some strong internal controls. There's some reviews and approvals in place. I would say in the finance area, probably payroll is the one with the least separation. Definitely, there are very good controls over dispersments. And the ones who sign checks, they actually enter their own pass codes in the system. There's definitely been improvements over the years, you know, that I've been here. As staff has been added and new processes have been added. But I would say right now, we still have a risk. And I will look at that when we're back to see with the addition of the new staff, you know, can that be more specified in where that risk is? Now, I can specify it for you, you know, because I've got the details on what we look at. But when it's, you know, more than a couple of areas, we usually use the generic comment. Does that help?
I just have one question.
Okay.
Would you make recommendations how to better segregate the payroll within the staffing we have?
We can, yeah. It's been difficult with just the two staff. But now that there's a third, we'll be able to sit down and look more closely at what can be separated. And you still, you know, if you were to look at municipal court, you've got two employees over there. So there may still be some areas where it's not what we call optimum. And we want to make sure you're aware of that risk. But definitely, we do look at, and the town has implemented, you know, many processes. I remember when the signatures were going to entering your code and in-code. They were very careful in implementing that to make sure that they didn't lose that authorizing check signature by just printing the signatures. And you have to be careful when you go with that new technology to make sure you don't lose some of those controls. And I know the town has been very careful in that. And sometimes we look at access. And when you've got two people, you, even if you do separate duties some because of absences, et cetera, you probably still have both of them with the ability to do everything. So even if you have two people that can process payroll, they probably both have the ability to change pay rates, to send a direct deposit. So we're looking at every aspect of that. And we don't want those four main categories to be allowed by one person. But we would definitely revisit that. I would say for FY '24, that third position was not filled long enough for the training to take place and for her to take on some of those roles. That's something that I haven't talked to Sandy recently about it, but that is something that the training would have to take place first. So we'll have to consider that. And then when we come in, we'll look to see if she's been able to take over some of those roles. Now, there are also what we call controls on the front end and controls on the back end. So it could be, you know, journal entries are reviewed. So Brandon and, I'm sorry, Bridget and Sandy review one another. But it's reviewed after the fact. So that's what we would call a backend control. And then you've got a front-end control, which maybe somebody approved the entry before it was entered. So we also have that to consider. And same with payroll. Payroll could be reviewed after the fact by Brandon. But just due to limited staff, you may not be able to have that separation across all areas on that front end. So sometimes that is what triggers a control. But we definitely do look at that at each engagement, and we look at it by area. I mean, we actually go through changes and processes, and we note who has custody, who does the bank reconciliation. And we look at the journal entries to see that they're approved. We look at who can change pay rates. We look at who can key time and process the payroll. So we do look at that. And again, it's not unusual, but I certainly see that, I certainly see the question of, okay, we have added a position. Is that going to help us in this area? It's going to help, but it may not eliminate the comment. It may not eliminate the comment at all. We would have to sit down and see what the town's able to do. But I think it's important to keep in mind, even if the comment is still here, that third person and separating what you can has improved those controls. Maybe not enough that I say this can go away, but it definitely has improved those enough that the town is more protected from fraud. That one's just a struggle. It is really hard to completely eliminate that comment 001 there. Slide 14, there was a new Gatsby this year, Gatsby 100. And that changed the way that governments account for accounting changes and error corrections. Now, the town didn't have any error corrections. That would be where we see something in '24 that required '23 to change. The town didn't have any of that. But the town does still have to implement this standard. The accounting changes would include if a fund changed from major to non-major, meaning we changed its position in the financial statement. So although there's not a significant impact on the town this year, the town did have to adopt that. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. And coming up, we've got Gatsby 101. This is our next super fun Gatsby for Sandy and Bridget. This is going to change the way that we recognize the liability for compensated absences. So compensated absences is just a fancier term for your leave pay, vacation leave, sick leave, maternity leave. And this standard basically is going to require that the town and will, of course, assist with implementation of this standard, look at each, I call bucket, of compensated absences and determine how that liability needs to be reflected. What we have seen affect towns and cities the most is that the sick leave, which previously was not a liability on the balance sheet, a portion of that is now becoming recognized on the balance sheet. So we do recognize vacation pay as a liability because the previous standard was that because you will receive vacation pay when you leave, that's a liability of the town. Now, they've changed the standard to if we expect that sick pay to be taken within a certain time period, the town may go ahead and recognize that liability. So that's probably more than you want to know about that. We do have, and I've sent Sandy and Bridget both an invitation, a webinar coming up in February where we're going to educate our clients on this because it's going to take some extra work on their part before we get here in determining those buckets of time and then also estimating, in some cases, how much they expect may be taken. So we'll definitely be offering some guidance through that webinar. And then even after that, we'll get with our clients more specifically on how this standard affects them. So that's just, again, we like to let you know what's up and coming and let you know, you know, that we'll be working with your finance department on those Gatsby implementations. Next is our contact information. That's the final slide. Again, Chris and I are available all year. If you want to talk more specifically about that separation of duties, I've got pretty good detailed examples in my work papers. And, you know, I could sit down with you or get on the phone with you and explain what do we need in this area. And we'll do that with Sandy when we come back. But if you're interested in how that's assessed or what we've documented so far, I do have that and could share it. Any questions from anyone, anything we need to talk about further?
Thank you. Thanks for the work putting on.
Thank you.
I'll take this opportunity to thank Sandy and Bridget, Ken, and I guess Sierra, to some extent, everyone being dependable, reliable, all working. We're grateful and grateful for y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, thanks to everybody for your patience through that. Critical, important, but it's not overly exciting.
Yes, sir, thank you. The next item for you is a consideration of a tax amendment from applicant Brandon Don on behalf of Georgia Masonry Supply in Oak Castle APG South to section 113-155, which is the exceptions to development standards of ordinance, specifically to the height requirements, the exemptions for height requirements. Specifically, the amendment would accommodate for their particular application 130-foot-tall accessory silo structure at the applicant's facility in Shamrock Industrial Park, which manufactures Sacrete and Arminix bagging products, but is not currently allowed under the town's current height regulations. I'd like to kind of go over some of the findings. Staff had kind of sat down with the applicant. We sat down with legal, and we reviewed this application and some of the associated things that would, that it would affect. In regards to the findings, some of our research in the ordinance, the exceptions of development standard section does obviously not allow for industrial uses to exceed 35 feet, except in some different kind of areas like chimneys and smokestacks. But it was not particularly clear or well organized. The purpose of the height limitation as it exists, which is currently 35 feet, it aims to maintain a lower development intensity, preserving the town's aesthetic and ensuring new structures do not clash with the town's strategic development plan or character. So that's the overall intent. So that's the overall intention for that. And the exceptions policy or the exceptions ordinance intent is to grant height exceptions only if they do not compromise the ordinance's spirit and intent, as mentioned before. Appropriate conditions are currently required to uphold these principles for other exceptions to development standards. And any exception and condition should be made with town-wide consideration in play. So we do have an applicant that's very specific. They're going to go over a specific project for themselves. But as a, from a staff perspective, I just want to make sure that I convey that anything that we propose at a staff level is for a town-wide application of these standards, so not specific to this site, although you'll hear some commentary on that from the applicant, but town-wide. So when we considered this application, there were some items that we noted in their request for the ordinance, the language in their application, that we did not see town-wide benefit for. So we did work with the applicant on some revised language that we believed was best for, from an application for the town as a whole. The current exceptions to the ordinance, there are existing structures such as cell towers that exceed the height limit. They're regulated under some pretty heavy federal protection, so they're a little bit different. But we do have other industrial uses that are exceeding this 35-foot height limitation. They were likely built before the current ordinance took effect and would be considered non-conforming. So we already have a little bit of an issue here. We did see this as an opportunity to revise the ordinance to make those structures conforming because it would be better to have them conforming as opposed to non-conforming. The proposed ordinance change would shift these existing non-conforming structures to conforming status, and the proposed language is intended to greatly limit the impact of taller structures within the quality growth overlay and near residential properties. So those were the two highest impact areas that we identified. So anything near a residential property, obviously a large industrial structure, that's going to impact greatly, and within the quality growth overlay where we've established a standard for having, you know, good architectural standards and a certain intensity of development that matches the character that we want. The other area that was of concern was the downtown kind of town center area, but there's enough residential kind of uses intermixed there that we did not see a conflict. In addition to that, there's no industrial land in the downtown district, so we did not see a conflict there. Initially, the applicant's proposed language did not, again, fully align with the ordinance's spirit and consistency requirements. We did collaborate with them to ensure that it better meets these goals and integrates more seamlessly with other sections of the ordinance. Again, not just for the applicant, but for townwide application. I'll kind of move to the ordinance itself. I apologize, what is included, the redlined version of what is included in your packet is an older draft of the ordinance. The official copy of the ordinance here is what we're going off of and what Planning Commission recommended approval of. And I'll go over the highlights of this. We made some modifications. There were sections that previously, that redline ordinance will show you what sections we changed, but again, the language is a little different from there to here. Under height requirements, under subsection B there, it gives two, or rather, three areas of exemption. Number three, I'll go from the bottom up. Number three was something that we made a text amendment change to when Founder Studio was presented to the town and movie media productions were very heavily coming into the counties. We wanted to make sure that we had an ordinance that handled that. And so that still stands on its own. There's no changes made to sound stages and movie media productions. They're very separate now. There is these other two sections, number one and two. Number one covers really mostly agricultural uses that are allowed to exceed the height restriction. And number two are just kind of just general height exceptions. We wanted to better organize that as a part of, you know, just kind of taking a comprehensive look at this ordinance. And we separated those two sections into agricultural uses and then into accessory industrial uses, so that we were much more specific about what uses and what types of structures can exceed the height limitation and in what districts. So there are agricultural exceptions that we listed, and those agricultural exceptions are barns, silos, other farm structures when located on farm. And then we, and then we talked about radio or television towers, which they, again, have federal protections. They're allowed to exceed the height limitation. And then we listed a lot of general height exceptions that are part of just general buildings. So parapet walls, bulkheads, belfries, cupolas, domes, monuments, chimneys, flagpoles, masts, and aerials, elevated penthouses, scenery lofts, and provided that these structures not cover more than 25% of the total roof area of a building. So those are just related to general building items. And then more specifically to the applicant's request, we added a section under sound stages, number five, which is accessory industrial uses. And these uses are very specifically related to industrial accessory uses, not the main industrial building. We're not, we're not giving exception to the main industrial building, but accessory uses located in M1, M2, and BTP zoning. So those are all of our industrial zoning classifications. And these include, again, accepts, uses that you would find typical to accessory industrial operations. So silos, water towers, windmills, chimneys, smokestacks, masts, aerials, elevators, conveyors, and those are typical. And the maximum height limitation for these, the cap is 150 feet. That being said, they will, to meet the spirit and intent of the ordinance of minimizing impact of structures over 35 feet, they'll have to comply with a pretty stringent setback requirement adjacent to or in relationship to Highway 74 and residential properties. So for the first one, it addresses residential properties, which says, "From the nearest residential or agricultural property line existing at the time of building permit application for one of these structures is submitted to the town, the structure shall be set back at least 15 feet for every foot of height over 35 feet." So they have to be at least that far for every foot they go above the 35-foot height limitation. And then that same application is made for, from the Highway 74 right-of-way line. So again, if you're within Highway 74, you're close to Highway 74, you have to meet that standard. Every foot, you go above 35 feet, you have to set that building back further back from the road or further back from that property line 15 feet. That minimizes the impact and the visual scale of the building, kind of meets the spirit and intent, even for, you know, exceptionally tall structures such as what the applicant's going to present to you tonight. So even up to about 150 feet, it would minimize the impact of those structures and you would really not be able to see them from those residential properties or Highway 74. Yes, Mr. Hunter?
Yes. I just did the quick calculation, just assuming that they wanted to maximize the height to 150 feet. That's a significant setback. However, my question is, what about the changes in elevation? So if you have a residential property that is at a much lower elevation than the industrial park, for instance, even if you set it back that far and if it's on a higher elevation, would you still be able to visually see that?
We considered that. I'll note that the, so in consideration of that, where these exceptions would be granted would be in industrial areas. I mean, when I took a look at the topographic kind of contours of the town, most of those areas are situated a little bit lower, and we were conservative in the establishment of that 15 feet for every foot because it becomes challenging to start to make standards based on current elevation change. It requires a lot of intense, you know, surveying and maybe some geotechnical work and things like that. So the 15 feet was meant to kind of be all encompassing to accommodate for some of those ground level, you know, elevation changes and just make it a more standardized, more simple requirement. But yeah, we did, we did consider that, and so that's why we established 15 feet, which is a pretty high number. It is a conservative number.
Is that all for you?
Yes, sir. Unless you have questions for me, I know the applicant is here. They'll have some things that they'll present to you if you have any questions for them.
All right. Any more questions for Philip or the council members?
Philip, where does the maximum height specifically spelled out in this new, the redline version?
So, and I apologize, that redline version is old. It's in the actual ordinance number or the ordinance document. And so if you see that on page, that's going to be on page three at the top there, so under number five, accessory industrial uses. And at the end it says, "Provided that such structure shall not exceed 150 feet."
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So we'll start the public hearing, we'll start the public hearing by offering the petitioner the opportunity to speak. Our general rule is we give you 10 minutes. And in the event that somebody speaks against, then you have the opportunity to rebut that. So I'll give you your 10 minutes in the event that you need it all.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm Brandon Bowen, 15 South Public Square, Carpsville, Georgia. That's where I practice. I have the honor of representing Old Castle, represented a number of jurisdictions, including my own, Carpsville. Old Castle is an international company that specializes in a variety of building materials, and they are made up of subsidiary companies, one of which is Georgia Masonry Supply. Georgia Masonry Supply, as you can imagine, is a Georgia-based company that has been making building products for many years. And in fact, since 1995, they've been operating their plant in the industrial district on the southwest side of Tarrin. And that facility, they make currently concrete block products. So if you, even if you built a jersey wall in your backyard at some point in time, that is the kind of product we're talking about. They've got several lines. They wished to add a new product line, which is a Saccrete. If you've been to Ace or Home Depot and bought bad concrete, that's exactly what it is. And so they, in order to do that, they have to install equipment on their existing building, which will allow them to elevate the raw materials down into the building in order to make the product. And it's a, it's a pretty big piece of equipment or assemblage of equipment that they need. When we filed the application, we were thinking about 130 feet. At some point for the time we filed, and we got the planning commission, they should have come back with more detailed specs, and it's actually 146 feet, so a little bit taller. But they came to me and said, "All right, we want to put this in. Help me with this ordinance. What do we need to do?" And I looked at the ordinance and, as Mr. Trokey told you, it's, you've got a 35-foot high limit on industrial uses. There are some exceptions, but there was not an exception that clearly applied to the type of equipment we're talking about. So that's what led us to our filing of this text amendment. So what the text amendment would do would be, basically as Mr. Trokey told you, it would allow construction above that 35-foot level, but would require a setback, substantial setback, 15-foot for every one foot above 35 feet. In the case of this property, that's a huge setback, but this property easily meets it because it is situated kind of right in the center of that southern industrial park, right up against the quarry that's there. It's a long distance between any residential or agricultural property or the, I was saying before. So we can easily meet that buffer there. And in fact, I think you should have some renderings, our engineer put together, that showed, he was not actually able to find.
It's the second PDF.
Yeah, it's probably the last stuff we have. He was not actually able to find anywhere in the city where you'd be able to see this equipment from a residential area. He does have a few views where you can see it from within the industrial area, but it's very minimal.
I believe that view is from Sonoia Road. What's on the, what's on the left? So this is near the stop sign. I believe what's on the left is the, it's an existing concrete plant.
Correct.
And then?
So all those are from within the industrial area. We think the setback would make it such that it would not be visible at all outside the industrial area. I mean, in addition, it's not going to produce always dust or anything like that. It's not, it would be the kind of thing no one will know was there unless they were in the city, you know, building a private office when the permits came in. So we appreciate you giving us time to present this. I'm happy to ask any questions. I do want to thank you and your staff for their cooperation in helping us put this together and presenting it. Unless you have any questions for me, I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Ryan Kirby. He is the Vice President of Operations for Georgia Masonry Supply.
Council members, can we go back to the other, to the first one? Sorry. Yes, that one.
Which slide would you like?
Just go, we'll go to the first slide again. We'll go quickly that. So real quick, Brandon introduced us a little bit. We're under Old Castle APG. Just a little bit about this, our parent company is actually CRH, which was founded in Ireland back in 1970. We kind of, we have a cool story. We're a family of families at Old Castle. You'll hear a little bit more about that at the next slide. We are very large. We actually have over 8,500 employees, over 200 locations. And APG is actually the largest producer, producer of architectural building products on the continent. And you see some of our brands up there. Some people may have heard of Belgar. That's our outdoor products we make. As Brandon mentioned, Saccrete is a bagging product that we're looking to hopefully add to this point. You can go to the next slide. So a little history on GMS, that's the operating company under APG. So GMS actually started back in 1990 by a gentleman named J.C. Rash, who started as just a brick distributing company in Hararsville. And in 1995, we actually purchased the Tarrin site, built our first block plant there. It's since expanded to three block plants there. So it was just, it wasn't part of Old Castle then, but then in 2003, J.C. sold the business to Old Castle. His son actually took over the business, is actually still our company president today. Very similar across the Old Castle family. We have a lot of situations like that. So since then, we've expanded. We actually cover 13 different block, paver, and bagging facilities across Georgia, Alabama, and Tennessee. And there's a photo there, you can see some products that came from us at the Tarrin Fire Station. So this is just a very quick glimpse of this project. You know, so we've got a seven-acre parcel, I believe that would be the north side of our property, that we're actually going to take and construct this dry mix facility. Again, we're going to use the existing building we have, but then we'll just add some accessory structure, things like a silo and the bucket elevator, which would actually be 146 feet tall to help us manufacture these products. You know, the good news is for inbound truck traffic, you know, the majority of the raw materials we would purchase would come from Marietta and would come from National Semat, which are already inside that industrial complex. So as Brandon mentioned, we hired an architect, Mike Clifford, with BCA Studios. He's a partner with them. He actually put this rendering for us. This was, this would be if you just pulled on the clover lane, clover lane kind of dents into our, into our property. That's kind of a view of what you'd see, and the top point of that would be what the bucket elevator is. It's 146 feet tall. And this is just a few of the project benefits. So if this, if this, you know, goes through, we know there's a lot of steps that would take place for this to happen. But if it happened, in year one, we would add eight to 10 jobs. By year three, we feel like we'd have another eight, another eight to 10 jobs, so 16 to 20 in total. Average salary, actually, I think this number is a little low, it'd probably be a little bit more like $75,000 a year. Most of these employees would be hourly employees. We estimate, talk to our controller, we estimate this project is going to cost us about 17.4 million. Based on that, we calculated an additional 80 to 100K in property taxes we believe we'd be paying. Not a sales tax, sales tax expert by any piece, but obviously we would generate more sales. The majority of those would be throughout the state of Georgia. Some would be local either, too. But obviously, there would be a benefit from that as well. That's it for the PowerPoint. We did have another slide where we actually We did have another slide where we actually showed the, we did the calculation based on one foot. Anything above thirty-five foot showed the radius was like sixteen sixty-five. I don't know if you want to show that. I think it was a, a different slide.
While he's looking for that, I want to state for the record that we did assess the residences that are in Peachtree City. We did make sure that we would not be adversely impacting them either. So I want to make sure Peachtree City knows that we think of them.
So I think it was a different file. It is sixty and sixty-five. Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's all I got, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think at the planning commission meeting, we may have been missing that one that you wanted to.
Got you. Okay, yeah, because it kind of shows that.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, sixteen seconds left. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak in support of this? All right. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none, public hearings close. Any final questions? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we, we approve this text amendment application and make the changes that have been suggested.
I second the motion.
Motion, seconded in discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Good. We appreciate your doing business in Tyron and hope this is fruitful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And please tell your truck drivers to.
Thank you.
Please tell your truck drivers to continue to do a good job of staying with safety in Tyron. All right, next, next item.
Good evening, council. Mayor. First thing I need to do here for me is the consideration to award to Joel Callen Parkway Gateway Planting Project, P W twenty twenty-four, pipe and twenty-four, to A Abbey Group in the amount of sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-one cents. In twenty twenty-four, town manager obtained a grant in G dot permit for this landscaping on the northbound and southbound town entrance signs along S R seventy-four. The bids were received on January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at two P M. So there was a A Abbey at that sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-one cents. This project is coming out of general funds, the public works budget one hundred forty fifty-four, twelve twenty-three. That's a capital project. We had budgeted fifty thousand dollars for this. The price, as you see, came in a little, or a little over almost nineteen thousand. There is money in that line item from the street skate gun and project that was left over that we can put to that. So it's in that same line item in our budget. And we are proposing that we perform with that. So staff is requesting awarding to Joel Callen Parkway Planting Project, P W twenty twenty-four, pipe and twenty-four, to the A Abbey Group in the total amount of sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-one cents.
Any questions?
What was the amount of the original fund that we, you know, that grant that we received?
The grant was thirty, thirty-nine thousand one eighty-two.
So how did we go from forty, I'll round it off, forty thousand to sixty-eight or sixty, almost sixty-nine thousand? What, what is it that we're receiving that we need, that we need to spend another twenty-nine, another thirty thousand dollars ground figures?
It's, it's approximately nineteen thousand additional. So the grant money comes in. We had a match to that, correct?
I can give you some background.
Thank you.
The grant, the grant offered was fifty thousand dollars, and that's what we were to apply for. But in order to apply, we had to get, which, which engineering firm did this from?
Tekkenwood.
Tekkenwood, I'm sorry. We had to get Tekkenwood to do a design, so we had something to bid. So their design maxed that fifty thousand dollar plan.
And then we used one year.
Yes, so we used that design to apply for the grant. And when the grant came in, it came in at, at the thirty-nine thousand one eighty-two. So, you know, the option was, okay, well, we, we either don't do it or pay the, pay the engineers additional funds to, to reduce the plan, you know, to kind of match or go forward as planned. And I think I'd said this in an email to you guys this week. You know, in order to do it right, we knew we weren't going to hit, we knew the bids weren't going to come in at thirty-nine thousand. So we did budget for extra money above the thirty-nine thousand that we granted. We, we budgeted fifty thousand. Obviously, it came in, this is the game you play when you bet things out, you know, because of costs. So we budgeted fifty. Obviously, it came in at, was it sixty-eight? And so we do have, we do have the funds that cover that because we save money on the gun project. There's also a line item in the admin budget that was seventy-five thousand dollars that was approved this year for site improvements. A lot of that was targeted for more work on the Clark property that we, number one, didn't have to spend because of public works working on that. And we haven't gotten to yet because we, we were looking at parking lot improvements, things like that. So there's two sources there for funding that you guys can use to balance that. But that's why the, the number's going to add up. If we, if we knew we had the grant award prior, they would have awarded it without, because their, the grant packet required a design before that they could consider. If we were able to just apply for the grant, you know, fifty thousand dollar grant, then we know what we're working with. That wasn't the case with this particular grant. So that's why the numbers are wrong.
Was the cost for Kirk, the, the engineering firm, was that included in the thirties? Oh, that came out of, is that coming out of the sixty-eight or sixty-nine thousand?
That came out of, that was a couple thousand dollars, and I don't remember what fund we pulled that from. Because that was probably last fiscal year when you guys approved that.
And was that an eighty-twenty match?
It was not a match.
There was no match?
No match. It was a hundred percent whatever funds you got.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then.
But obviously, we are matching here. We are adding money to this one just because. And you can look at the, the scale of the project. It's a lot of cutting, a lot of planting. It's going to be a, a vast improvement to what we have out there, a large scale improvement.
And then the maintenance on this to keep it that way.
There is going to be a maintenance cost, of course. We, we don't know what those numbers are going to be. Do you have an idea?
No, we're getting ready to put back out the twenty, what, what was the twenty twenty right away knowing will not be the twenty twenty-five right away knowing contract, putting that back out in R F D. We're, Curtis has done a lot of work on that. We're very close to getting that out. At that point, it would, this would be included in that. Let's go forward.
I don't know what the full length of that is, but do we have enough space that's ours on the southbound side? I mean, the, the northbound side, coming out of Peachtree City going north. It just looks tight and looks close to Dogwood Church here.
It is. It's, it's all G dot right away. And so we had to get a, a G dot permit to work in, so they had to provide them with all that information and G dot.
Scott, is there already irrigation on site there for these plants?
No, typically, the way these are, we use native species that, that don't need a lot of water except when they're first planted. And so once they get established, which doesn't take long, they basically, you don't need to do that unless we start getting a drought period at that point. We would have to water with, with like our jetback truck has water carrying capability. Something at that point in time, just to keep them surviving through that period. But that's typically the way we do these in remote areas because G dot, G dot's not going to, we'll throw them out already. Irrigation system, but they're, they're right away. I mean, they, they allow it, but in places from understanding that it's, it's just an added complication and an added expense for something that we won't use very often.
So I'm not looking at flowers, more bu, more bushes and, you know, that type of thing, stuff that has sustained itself.
There are plants and, and the emphasis is on plants, not annuals, on things that we're going to have to regularly, you know, replant, things like that. Like Scott said, it's all supposedly native species and things that are for party, survive in that area.
Drought tolerant.
Yeah.
So time, taking a pollution.
I want to say it was, let me get back here. I think it was sixty days, but maybe more than that. I need to check. I'll, I'll send Joel across. So if Brandon, you can go and have a couple, you know. Harmsville, can you look that up on the website?
I.
Project annual.
Yeah, I can.
I'm using.
Is that all? Y'all need the answer to that question before we take a motion?
No, I don't do.
Can I have a motion?
I make a motion that we award the Gateway Planting Project, P W two zero two four dash two four, to the A Abbey Group at the amount of sixty-eight thousand nine sixty, sixty-one.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you, council.
Next item, Perkins.
Yes, sir. So the next item is a consideration of an amendment to the town charter to revise provisions pertaining to quorum and voting. This is the first of two votes that you guys will have to do. This is a very unique kind of action that requires two presentations at two different meetings. And we'll do it this, this week and then two weeks from now. And you, you actually have to vote at, at both meetings for it to go forward. So just a little bit of background here. So our current charter requires the mayor and, and three council members to establish a quorum. And so in the past, that has, that has created some issues if, if, if more than one person is, is absent from a meeting. Somebody has to recuse themselves. If you had multiple people that had to recuse, it can just cause some issues with voting. So we asked legal to review the charter and to give us some feedback. And the recommendation from Mr. Allenport was that the mayor and council reduce the quorum requirement to be the presence of three elected officials, with the majority of those present being sufficient to pass a motion. So you could have two council members and the mayor or two council members out of, if you had three, just three counts, if the mayor was in present. So for instance, the three of you guys without the mayor tonight could hold a meeting and you could vote and you, you could do business. So it, based on past experiences where we, we've actually had to cancel meetings because of people being out or people being sick, recusals and things like that, we feel like this is a, a, a good prudent move to improve that and to give us the ability to carry on our business if there are absences. Have any questions? I'll do my best. The mayor was heavily involved in this and Patrick is here as well.
I would just point out that generally speaking, it requires going to the legislature for a charter change. But legal counsel made the decision with this, this was the type of change that could be handled by the rule.
Well, I would say not generally speaking. I think generally speaking, we have home rule powers to make changes to the charter. There are certain exceptions that, that would require us to go to the general assembly.
Can I say usually speaking?
Yeah, as, usually speaking, we can make changes on our own or usually we can't. I just want to make it clear, this is not.
Sometimes, and what people generally think, can I use generally in that? Exactly. People generally think that it has to go before the legislature. Our attorney believes in this case that is not necessary. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask that this be tabled until Ms. Gloria is present. Since it is a charter change, I feel it's important that all of us council members vote on this.
Okay, just a point, it has, we have legal requirements to advertise. It's, it's already been advertised. What kind of issues does that cause, Patrick? Just re-advertise?
You would, you would have to re-advertise it. You could probably do the first read at the February twentieth meeting, but you then have to have another read after that. At least seven days after that.
Did she ask for that, for us to?
She, no.
You can make a motion to take.
We have discussion.
Sure. We can also have discussion after a second. So either one.
Well, I guess, I guess for Patrick.
I know in the, in the past, for, for instance, if, if Jessica and I were at a park event together, that's not considered a quorum.
Right.
Right. Two council members, right? But if three of us were, were at the park together, would that be considered?
Honestly, we're not undertaking town business.
Right. Okay, so we can still be together as long as we're not doing town business.
That's fair.
Okay, so even if the number of, of the quorum changes from four members to three members doesn't matter as long as we're not conducting business.
Right.
Okay.
And Gloria, is this was discussed, of her discussion on the agenda tonight?
I, I don't, I tell you, we've, this is probably almost ninety years old, and we've never really had an issue with this as far as people not being here. Yes, we've had an occasion where, you know, one, one council member is out. I go, do you know how many times we've had it when two council people are out, we've had the council meeting?
I mean, in the six years I've been doing this, I think we've canceled a couple of meetings.
Well, it's not just people that's also recusing.
I understand. Or the reason why someone couldn't participate in it.
Right, I mean.
As, as long as, as long as I've been on council, the only time that I've recognized that was one time that Ms. Gloria was unable to do that. I, I, I just don't see the need for this. This has been this way. I, I just think it, it puts us in a bad spot here when you've got just two people, two council people that are now voting on this. You've taken the, the power or the ability for the, the council who was, or the elected officials that now only you can use just two of them to, to make changes. And that to me is a little upsetting. I, I think it needs to remain the same. I think we need to continue the way that we're doing it. Granted, there's going to be a situation at some point going forward, one or two incidences, where we may have to do something. There's got to be some way that we can make some special arrangements for that as far as the voting goes.
So when you say there are going to be instances where we're going to have to do something, define what you mean.
All right, so we have, we have, we have a situation that where, where Gloria has to recuse herself or one or two of us have to recuse ourselves. At that point, we're not able to vote on that. But for that one instance, and we don't even have that situation in front of us, we're going to go and change a char, a charter things to, to accommodate that one possible time that that may come through. We've lasted how many years without that? I, I just don't, I don't see the need for it, and I'm, I'm certainly not in favor of changing it at this point in time.
I'm curious in Billy's situation that he's, he's suggesting, like two council members have to refuse themselves for some reason. Of course, three people couldn't, in our, under our present rules, three people couldn't continue that meeting because you don't have quorum. Have you seen, have you seen any situations, anywhere else, where, where they got beyond that?
I have not personally. I'll tell you, most jurisdictions that I've been involved with, though, only have a majority requirement. Basically, if you have five, four council members and a mayor, the quorum requirement is only two or three of those, those, those five people being present. And, and two votes is enough to pass something if only three people are there.
Okay, so we're little, so we're not the norm as far as having a majority.
That's correct.
We have the most restrictive quorum rules that Dennis knows of.
Okay. And I remember having to come. Okay. And I remember having a con- we had a conversation with Dennis about this and, and we were throwing out examples. One of those examples being two people had to recuse themselves. He dug in, he found, he found an example where the court appointed council members to, to, to vote on that item.
Well, he was, I don't know that he ever actually, I think he was, he had memory of something like that happening. I don't know that he was ever actually able to nail it down where that actually happened. But we don't really know what would happen in that case. For example, the situation we're, we're thinking of is you have a rezoning petition. Two people have some sort of conflict and now you're left with just three people. Well, that rezoning application cannot be approved, which is probably gonna subject the town to lawsuits. There may be a process in place where a court can appoint a temporary council member. I don't, I've never seen that happen. So that, that, that's our only, that, that's the only thing I could think of that could potentially help us out in that situation.
And there are not a lot of firsthand examples because most municipalities aren't in our situation.
The other thing I thought of too, sometimes we have discussions with you, Brandon, where we're bringing in two council people. And now we've not able to do that because the mayor is usually involved in that as well. So now you down, now you're dealing with one council person and the mayor and you, that, that to me is a little disconcerting. I just, I, I don't think that that's right. I don't even care for the two, I, I, it would be nice if we could all meet together and discuss, but I know we can't because of that. So when, when we start bringing it down to just individuals in there, that's, you know, I, I don't know. I'm just not, I'm just not comfortable with it at all. It's just my personal opinion, that's all.
So I guess back to Billy again, two people would be allowed in a room of Brandon, two elected officials.
Under the.
Not three. No, I'm talking under the new.
Under the new, two would yes be allowed.
Yes, because three would constitute a quorum under the new. Right now, technically, three could be in the room because three elected officials.
Two, two and the mayor.
Two and the mayor, yeah. Okay, okay. So, so we're still not in a room talking about or being, or, or, or being made aware of a certain stance or whatever by ourselves. It, it would be two elected officials entailing them.
That is possible, yes.
Yes, but I'll give a new proposal.
All right, we are, because of our quorum requirements, we are in a situation where we have to have unanimous votes tonight to pass something. It appears that we don't have that. So if somebody wants to make a motion, they can.
I would like to make a motion to table this item to change the charter and have it re-advertise for another meeting and when Ms. Gloria hopefully will go back on the twentieth. And then we can do another ones two weeks later. That's my proposal.
There's a motion to table to, to, two weeks from now and then whatever that next meeting is. If I'm understanding you correctly.
That would be a March sixth meeting?
Yes.
All right.
Cause I, I would have, we would have to get an add-in to the paper to run.
You should ask her if she wants to amend her.
We could do it tomorrow. Well, it doesn't have to be that.
We're gonna manage that one. If that's what they want, you're okay.
That, that came into mind. You cannot amend her motion, but you can ask her if she is willing to amend her motion. You have to say.
What?
Okay. In addition, can we have a workshop prior to that meeting? Since Ms. Gloria is not here to be engaged in these discussions, to be brought up to speed on all of the information prior to the meeting and then we can have discussion.
I'd like to amend my. Go ahead.
The, the intention of this process is for this to all be done in, in such a way that the public is part of it. And I, and I know your meetings, your workshops are open to the public, but those aren't part of the advertisement. The advertisement covers the two dates at which you're going to approve it. So I, I think if there's any discussion about it, it should probably happen at those two meetings.
Okay, then I, I will draw my.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion table. Is there a second?
I seconded that we tabled the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? All right. Next item.
All right, the next item is the Palmetto Arrowood Spencer Lane Roundabout DW twenty twenty-one thirteen zero four. Consideration to award it to Southeastern Site Development Incorporated in the amount of two billion, three hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars and seventy-one cents. As part of the two thousand seventeen Splos, you'll remember that a roundabout was proposed at, at this intersection. And it was proposed as a mini roundabout. In August of twenty twenty, the town took proposals from engineers to evaluate the intersection and hired Maldino and Wilburn to perform a study. And in March twenty twenty-one, the study was completed and presented to council with a recommendation against a mini roundabout and a, and a recommendation for a full roundabout. Staff developed a, a request for proposals for hiring a transportation engineer of record that could design the roundabout as well as other projects within the town. In December of twenty twenty-one, the roundabout project was assigned to Pond for design. They were the ones who were selected as part of that hiring process of the of the ER, the OR, the Ring of Record. And in September of twenty twenty-three, staff presented the ninety percent of design plans for council approval and start land acquisition. In December of twenty twenty-four, the land acquisition was completed and the project was advertised for bids. Bids were received on January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at ten P M. A little bit of Southeastern Site Development Incorporated at two million, three hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars and seventy-one cents for the base bid. Staff had also added bid alternates in the event that the project came over budget. These were de-duct alternates with lesser quality items to help reduce the cost if we were over budget. And therefore, the staff is recommending not to accept the bid alternates as the project is well within budget. The funding for this is coming from the Splos, two thousand seventeen Splos Project three two one dash four nine dash five four point one four one four. This also includes the multi-use path that will connect Arrowood to Southampton. And we feel giving people the opportunity to go that direction to get to public center places like that as well as within Southampton. So the staff requests awarding the Palmetto Road Arrowood Spencer Roundabout Project DW twenty twenty-one hyphen thirteen hyphen zero four to the Southeastern Site Development Incorporated in the amount of two million, three hundred fourteen thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars and seventy-one cents.
Scott, do we have any updated rend- renditions of that project? Do you have something just to?
Sure.
Just spend one.
So the cover sheet actually has the full project on it. If there's something specific you wanna see.
No, no, I'm just, and that includes that, all that plumbing that you have to do there with the sewage?
Yes, it does.
And that's obviously gonna be done first?
The utilities are typically done first. That's our intention, yes, sir. And the sewer, the water, we have cable, gas, power, all, all utilities. And there is a utility plan of several planes actually associated with that. It's pretty, pretty densely populated with utilities like most intersections.
Any questions? Very glad to hear this came under budget, sir. Drastic work.
Yes, sir. Worked hard.
Do you know, that, 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 do you know these people?
This company?
Yeah.
I have not worked with them. I have talked to two other people who have worked with them and they were both very pleased with their work.
Okay.
People that I respect. Well, it was actually a, actually a company that bid on the project. That's a, yeah, a contractor.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve or to award the Palmetto Road, the Arrowood Spencer Lane Roundabout PW twenty twenty-one thirteen dash thirteen dash oh four to Southeastern Site Development Incorporated in the amount of two million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-one cents.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, thank you, council. And just so you know, that's gonna be like an eighteen-month project.
Say that one more time, please.
The construction on it is approximately an eighteen-month project.
Okay, and, and then their estimated time of starting?
We get the contracts then we back. Legal does, normally takes about a month, a month and a half to get that paperwork back.
April, May?
And then right after that, then we'll set. They have like twenty-one days to start this kind of project, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, is there any public comment? Any staff comments?
We have a few. Philip, you wanna go ahead?
Thank you. I we had a council meeting, text amendment meeting regarding the town center mixed-use ordinance where we had a removal of townhomes and then there were some other concerns that were brought forth by council about the TCMU district and some things of that nature. So staff, as a result of that, has moved forward with some adjustments to that ordinance and we would like to have a workshop meeting in March, our first meeting in March, to kind of discuss some of those. Particularly as it pertains to uses in the TCMU, residential uses in the TCMU district. But we are working with TSW, they're the ones that did the Shamrock Park Master Plan. We had some technical services money in my budget left to have them assist with some updated architectural, use-based and performance-based metrics in that TCMU district. So that certain uses meet certain performance standards for development. There was some concern particularly around townhomes and other types of developments, even just single family and how those go in and what type of performance metrics we're looking for from those developments as they situate in downtown. So I would like to have a workshop meeting to discuss some of the preliminary findings there. And we do have some overview documentation on certain types of residential uses, kind of approximately what they're like from a density perspective, just from a general use perspective. And I'll be sending you an email kind of ahead of that workshop meeting with some of those details, but just wanted to give you an update on that.
Any questions for both? So just a couple more things. I have advertised a talk of the town meeting for February twenty-fifth, six, if you're in this room. We're gonna talk about a few project updates and then I'll have a presentation on House Bill five eighty-one. So hope we'll get a.
What time is that going to start?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. And then twenty-sixth?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
We have another, we have the DDA thing with the twenty-sixth at six. I believe, I believe it's the food truck thing, but that's not open. I said y'all need to know that. You might not have seen it yet.
Okay.
And I've also advertised this week the registration for Tyrone One-O-One. Our intent was to the first two years, we, we held it the fall. Our current, my, my goal has been now to, to have it start coinciding with Georgia Cities Week, which is in April. So we're going to start at the third week in April. It'll be Tuesday, ninth at six. But registration is open. You can go to our website. I announced it yesterday and we've already had sixteen people sign up. A popular program. And just to add to that, I just wanna let you guys know, I'll give you more information later. I have been invited in October to the International City Campaign Managers Association Conference in Tampa to present on our Tyrone One-O-One Community Outreach Program.
Good for you.
To my colleagues from not only in the United States, but it's an international organization. So looking forward to that, looking forward to having the town recognize for this type of program and telling other cities how they can put something like this together. So looking forward to doing that. So. All right, and then the final thing that I wanted to, so at the last meeting, we discussed the Shamrock Park trees, the dam, the trees on the dam. Council wanted us to go and, and do a cost estimate. Scott got with Sean on the hearing and took data from, or information he got from them and put this together. So the, the estimate is a hundred and sixty-six thousand, six eighty for the tree removal. That includes a hundred and one thousand, four hundred for the, for the work. And then, of course, we have contingencies, design and construction admins and inspections that amounts to one sixty-six, six eighty. The funding source would be the Splos twenty-three, twenty twenty-three dams line item, which, Scott, how much is in that line items? A million?
For which one?
The twenty twenty-three Splos dams. It's a significant line item.
Yeah, it is a significant line item. Fair for that. See if I have it here. Let's do a movement secure that they don't.
Yes, sir.
Backfilling the tree boy.
Uh, let's see, we have one source for about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And there is Splos money for that, which was two hundred and twenty thousand.
Well, what line item I'm thinking of for dams, that was roughly a million dollars.
That has Adams and Handley and Shamrock.
Okay.
And one point five.
So there's funding available for this, but that's, that's the estimate that both Scott and Sean were, they worked on. That's what they've come up with for the estimate. So if you guys wanna give council or, I'm sorry, give staff direction, we'll make it happen.
We have to do that tonight?
You don't have to do it tonight. I can have something else up to you guys.
I make a motion to get it started.
Motion to get it started. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Stop. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Next?
Well, that's all I've got.
Any other council or staff comments? Any council comments?
I would like to congratulate Sandy and the entire finance department and everyone that contributed to this success. It's not very comforting to know that we're in good hands and our taxpayer money is being every penny, every dime is being accounted for and spent with integrity. Thank you for making sure that happened.
Anything else?
Happy Valentine's Day to everyone next week.
All right, there is no need for executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.